Member of the council, Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Shrubnick.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
If you please stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Due to the authority which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no changes, the agenda will stand approved as written.
Is this where I?
No.
Okay.
I'll give you a warning.
Okay, thank you.
Arthur Sullivan has been our affordable housing expert for ever since we've been a city of 20 years. He's been at this for 25 years. And Arthur's provided invaluable vision and direction on some of Kenmore's major housing policy projects, including transit-oriented development district, comprehensive plan housing element, housing strategy plan, and more recently, the mobile home park project. We're really excited for Arthur as he approaches his retirement, but we're really sad to see him go. Arthur has also administered programs and covenants necessary to incorporate some long-term affordable housing into private development projects. Spencer 68 is one example. His housing trust fund work, including the ability to bring funding partners together, has resulted in the actual construction of affordable housing projects in Kenmore and throughout the Arch area, which is the east side. Copper Lantern is one, for example, on 182nd Street that he was involved in. I've had the pleasure of serving on a number of committees that Arthur has come in front of to request money and for different projects, and I'm always impressed with the quality of the projects and his zeal and what he has brought to it. Arthur's professionalism, expertise, and dedication to all things housing is really unmatched, and his retirement is truly a loss for our city and the entire region. Thank you, Arthur. Thank you, and good luck on your next chapter. But since you were Arch, we have an Arch.
But thank you. This is very kind of you, and I appreciate the recognition. Some of you may have been at an event last week for me and heard some of the comments there, and I'll sort of echo the main one there, which was about big numbers. And big numbers just because of how long I've been around, but the big numbers of all the different players I've had the chance to work with, all the councils in Kenmore and all the other cities in East King County, your planning commissions, your neighborhood groups, the developers. I think we said we tallied up that there were 98 different nonprofit and for-profit development groups that the cities have worked with in the last 25-plus years. And so I've just been lucky enough to work with all the players who do much of the work, the staff at Arch over the years who work tirelessly to support all the work for you. So, massive, you know, different councils had this brilliant idea. I came from the development side of the world, and I heard about this idea of cities working together. And I thought it was the most brilliant idea I ever heard about, and I have worked tirelessly over the last 25 years to keep that vision alive. I hope it stays well and live going into the future. You have something that the rest of this country envies. This partnership you have created, not me. I've just been the lucky one to help do the day to some of the work for you. But you have seen the wisdom and the practicality of working together with your other jurisdictions in order to have the best resources available to you to address this very challenging issue. So I thank you very much for that opportunity to be able to be in that setting. As I said, many people around this country are in all of the things that you have done. So thank you for letting me be part of that for as long as I have been. And so as I say, I move on to the next chapter. I'll still be in the region, but we'll see where that takes me. But thank you very much.
As long as I've got you up there, Arthur. You've always said, you have always said that you're our employee. But you're the employee for all of the cities on the east side.
That's right. I say that wherever I am.
Exactly. So tell me, how many meetings do you think you've been to?
Let's see. That was one of the questions last week, and I think, I think I conservatively estimated over 1,600 evening meetings. And that's, and that is, I'm glad you brought that up because of all the work I do, it's the part of working with the community and with the neighbors which is the part that I feel is the most, can be challenging at times, but I also feel it's been the most rewarding. So thanks for bringing that up.
How many, how many units do you think you've helped create over the past 25 years?
You're asking me to remember the questions I asked everyone else. It's over 6,600 units of housing that have been created by the cities collectively through your land use and your direct assistance. So it's been quite the effort, and as I said, it's been a pleasure to be able to be part of that for as long as I have.
Arthur, your deeds speak volumes about you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. It's an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community, and we ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes and to sort of help remind you, they'll be posted up there on the screen behind me. And anyway, the clerk, please call the first person.
Ishpall Dickens.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, and members of the Kenmore City Council. My name is Ishpall Dickens. I'm a retired attorney, and I've spent the last 30-plus years of my life working with manufactured homeowners, and I'm here to comment briefly on the proposals that you'll be looking at later this evening. I assume the goal of the city council in looking at the manufactured housing preservation options is to preserve existing affordable housing in light of the affordable housing crisis currently facing Kenmore, the county, the state, and the nation. And I applaud the council for being proactive. It is much better to preserve existing affordable housing now than to respond retroactively when it might, when it might be too late to do anything. I appreciate that staff have worked hard and prepared several options regarding manufactured housing, but the fairest and most equitable option available is option five, the adoption of a mobile home park zoning ordinance. This would mean that no manufactured housing community is singled out, either to be included or excluded from the ordinance. It means all homeowners will have some guarantee of long-term security of tenure, while the landlords will be guaranteed steady income flow and the ability to continue operating their profitable businesses. Just for your information, the city of Portland just passed a local zoning ordinance there. That means 56 manufactured housing communities in that city will be rezoned and designated explicitly for manufactured housing communities, giving 3,000 households an opportunity to continue living in their own homes and with the ability to sell those homes to other low-income households in the future. Kenmore could do the same and help its citizens in that way, and I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Prince.
Evening, councilmembers, Mayor Baker. Thank you for your time tonight. Reason I come here is I'm concerned that the city is considering giving our hard-earned tax money to a group who is bringing in housing, in housing individuals who may have outstanding warrants or be convicted sex offenders. I also find it hard to believe that the citizens of Kenmore would want this as well. What's notably missing in this request is a full background on the shelter, how they operate, or the revenue and how expenses are managed. Doing checks for warrants and sex offenders is a simple process and helps to protect our neighborhoods. It should be a requirement for any group such as this requesting money. And I've heard some of the supporters who don't want to exclude someone who may have some minor parking infractions. The fact is, there's no such thing as a minor warrant. The other fact is that if you're trying to help people get into housing or get jobs, if you can't pass a simple background check, you're not going to get either. I read the background provided in this proposal and tried to figure out what money is coming in, how it's spent, and can't find anything. I've checked for websites, everything that I could look at, and there's nothing out there. They provide a lot of vague statements without any data to specifically support it or where the money will be going during the time that they are in Kenmore. I've managed budgets from a few hundred dollars to a quarter million dollars, and when I looked at this, this wouldn't get through our first pass. I find it interesting that back in April, when this group was asking for a permit for a shelter, nothing was mentioned at that time, that they're also going to be asking the city for money because they didn't have a way to operate it. It isn't until when they're ready to open that they now come looking for money. What they have been doing to raise money since then, what is their operating income, we can't find. Again, you can't find details about how much money contributions are coming in, where it's going. How much is this request in comparison to other revenue and expenses? All questions that should be asked, I think, of any group who's asking money for the city. Now, I don't question this group's intentions, that they're focusing with the best intentions and wanting to help those in crisis, but I do have concerns when the safety of our neighborhoods isn't a priority. When you can do something as simple as checking for warrants and sex offenders, to not bring them into our neighborhoods, you should do it. The other fact unfortunately is that money isn't the answer. In November of 2017, this Puget Sound business journal identified that more than $1 billion is being spent in the Seattle area for this crisis. The lack of coordinating among groups, inefficiencies, and wasted money are some of the biggest contributors to what's not working. I urge you not to approve this request. Don't use our tax dollars to put our neighborhoods at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prince.
Stacy Valenzuela.
Can it be translated for the Spanish speaking? Because they missed Ishpall's. I'm Stacy Valenzuela, homeowner at Lakewood Villa. Sorry, can't see with the glasses this. We appreciate your time in allowing us to share our concerns about the mobile home parks here in Kenmore. We are some of Kenmore's most vulnerable...
Stacy, if you want this translated, you've got to give her a chance to do it unless she's got a printed copy of it.
Did you want to repeat all that, or did you want?
Spanish speaker to English. Okay.
Okay, because they can't understand it, though, some of them, right?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, they can't understand what we're saying. And there's at least...
But you're speaking to us.
Okay, okay.
Not to them.
So we are some of Kenmore's most vulnerable residents and are over 500 constituents, the seniors, the veterans, the disabled, the low and fixed income. We need your help. By voting for the mobile home park overlay with long-term preservation, you protect our homes, our investment, and the equity in them. By voting for the mobile home park overlay with long-term preservation, you keep the families, communities within these parks intact. You preserve existing housing, ensure the diversity in housing that is available in our city. By voting for the mobile home park overlay with long-term preservation, you help preserve our affordable housing. Without this, many of us would be displaced to couch surfing, living in cars, or homelessness, while our name is on a wait list. Most of us prefer to have a yard, a direct door to the outside, only a few stairs, no corridor, no neighbor to be too close above us or below us, and the ability to have pets. We also ask for your assistance for some of the parks that need enforcing the mobile home park laws towards landowners, most of which are not Kenmore residents, that fail to maintain the mobile home park sites per RCW 592130. This keeps up the health, safety, and environmental quality for those who live in and around the mobile home parks. It would be unjust to punish the homeowners for the landowner's failure to maintain the mobile home parks' infrastructure and cleanliness. Under the mobile home park overlay, the park landowner can sell the mobile home parks to a new owner, and there is a website as well as Craigslist for that. We, the homeowners at the Kenmore Mobile Home Parks, want to stay in Kenmore, in our community, in our mobile home parks. Please, we would appreciate your vote for the mobile home park overlay with the long-term preservation to protect and preserve our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela.
Lori Jensen.
Hi, I'm Lori Jensen, and I'm from Inglewood East. I'm a mobile home park here. I first wanted to thank you for so, so many of you have taken your time to actually get to know us and even visit our homes, and I thank you for that. I just wanted to, somebody asked me to bring up again, the, when we went to the regional affordable housing task force meeting, that 47% of King County's population makes zero, or makes 30% or under the median, average median income. And with that said, I also read an article in the Seattle Times a couple days ago, and who writes it is David Ward, who's the president of the Seattle Coalition for Affordability, Livability, and Equity, SCALE. I don't know if you guys have heard of that. But they're advocates for people, for affordable homes. And they, this is about Seattle, but it, I think it resonates with us. And they mentioned, I'll just read a couple paragraphs, they said. "The MHA program will displace poor and low-income people. It is intended to help increasing the zone density inside and outside the urban villages in low, medium, and high-income neighborhoods. Will derive up land costs resulting in higher, higher housing and rental costs and higher property taxes. Many Seattle residents," and this is about Seattle, "Seattle residents will no longer be able to stay in their affordable homes. Half of the tax returns filed in Seattle are for incomes under $50,000 a year, and many seniors who own their homes are on fixed incomes." They come up with a solution, some of their solutions involve, oh, I'm sorry, it says "The new construction that the MHA upzones will encourage, often destroy naturally affordable older buildings, both rental and owned. There are now half as many units available for families of three making under $45,000 as there were in 2012, according to the McKinsey report." I think that's an important note to bring up when we're talking about displacing, you know, like digging up the mobile home parks instead of letting them stay. And I see some of your options, a lot of thought has been put into that, and I hope you think along those lines as well. And I don't have time to talk about whatever it's going to talk about. I'll stop right there.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jensen.
Kylan Parks.
I'm Kylan Parks with the Association of Manufactured Homeowners for the State of Washington. I am a manufactured homeowner at Alpine Ridge South in Lynnwood, Washington. As many of you know, this issue is very close to me because I have had a personal experience of being a displaced manufacturer homeowner, or thought they were, whose community was sold to a developer 13 years ago. My community was lucky when it was purchased by the Housing Authority of Snohomish County. We did that by showing that it was much more cost-effective to preserve than it was to lose. Because although so many people that live in these communities are elderly, low-income, and disabled, many higher-income people choose this form of affordable housing for many positive reasons. And they are all, most all, unsubsidized, making it the last form of unsubsidized housing left in our country. I would urge you to place option five to all six manufactured housing communities in Kenmore, as I know it would be a very difficult thing to tell a few communities that they do not deserve the same protections others get. To me, by applying option five, the city would be making an example of the city to prioritize the equity and prioritizing the interests of these people who would otherwise have the fewest options. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Parks.
Michael Grimm.
I thought I had maybe a half hour to go. I'm sorry about that. My name is Michael Grimm. I live at Inglewood East Mobile Home Park, and I would like to give you permission to call 911 if I happen to have a heart attack because I'm not used to speaking in public.
Oh, you're doing just fine.
So, anyway, I guess what I wanted to say tonight is that my wife, Joanie, she has lived in Inglewood East for 37 years. She remembers when the rent was only $100 a month. Now, we're paying over $700 a month. That's only 37 years. I mean, the, the cost of rent is just going so high that most of us are just having a really hard time paying the rent, and we don't know where we're going to go. There really, from my research, I have not been able to find anything in the way of mobile home or manufactured home living close by that I can move to that would be less than what we're paying now. So if I move out of my home now, there's no place for me to go, and I really don't want to live in a tent. My wife has multiple sclerosis. She cannot walk. She can barely talk sometimes. She could not go through a move. And I have heart disease. I don't think I could handle it myself. We've spent a lot of money and time working on our home, keeping it up, keeping the codes up. We had, actually, King County Housing Authority did $35,000 worth of work on our home alone because of its, in such bad condition. This was just two years ago. If we were to move that soon, we'd lose that investment. I've been in the park 21 years. I married my wife when I, 14 months after I moved into the park. We were married in the clubhouse, and we've been a very happy couple. We love the park, actually. We love the people. And I go out of my way to help all my neighbors, anyone who needs help. The thing is, I won't be able to do that anymore if things don't change. And if it was in my authority to do so, I would roll back the rents 10 years, honestly, to where it was comfortable, even for those on social security. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. And you did a very good job. There's nothing to be, to be worried about there. Next person.
Nicole Dixon.
My name is Nicole Dixon. I am a homeowner at Kenmore Village. I want to make a plea upon your hearts to consider protecting the mobile home parks. I've rented most of my life, and for the first time, I actually was able to purchase a home. A mobile home is a mobile home. It's a home that I own, I have possession of, I can change it. Over the weekend, I replaced my pavers. I got on my hands and knees, and I got a shovel, and I dug up the dirt, and I patted it down, and I got a level, and I made it so I can park my car. Never in my life have I been able to have a pride that I worked so hard, and now look at it, I can park there. I had to pull up ivy because it was taking over everything. It's an invasive plant. When I rent, I'm paying somebody else for something that I don't have any pride for. Oh, I scraped up the floor. I'll replace that when they move. They'll take care of it, take it out of my deposit. But for the first time, every penny I put into this, I'm prideful of. I look for that correct fixture, and I know that it's mine. And as a renter, you don't have that. You don't have any pride in anything. You just rent, you clean it up, you move out, and you move to the next place that's less expensive, or if you can afford more, you go to the next place that looks good. So, mobile home parks, it's something that those of us who can't afford a large home can actually call home until we save enough to actually get a real home that is a little bit bigger possibly. But don't overlook the fact that these are homes. They're ours. We possess them. We worked hard to get them, and we want to keep them. It's a good environment. In an apartment complex, I didn't know my neighbors. I know my neighbors now. They come over and say hi. They off, they call me over when they're having a party. You want a beer? How about some cake? It's something I haven't had, and I've been living in apartments since I was 18. That's a long time. I just want to, you know, put a plea out there, try to protect us, even if it's long enough to change maybe overlay or protection where we don't have to move in a year, or at least if you can't protect us, make it so that for those of us who can't move our mobile homes, that we can at least afford to move somewhere else. Because I have a mobile home that is too old to move, according to the law. And if I can't take my home with me, I'll be homeless. Yeah, I can find an apartment, but it won't be the same. So at least make it worth what I paid for, or try to have some sort of protection for us so that we can live if our homes are taken away from us. Thank you very much. You guys have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. Mayor, point of order?
State your point.
I'd like to suggest that perhaps our excellent interpreter would be able to be put to work for our Spanish-speaking audience and citizens who are here, because they might benefit, I think they would benefit, from being fully involved by actually hearing what the English-speaking audience is saying. And I'm sure she's being paid by the hour, so we are, have her here already, so maybe we could put her to work.
I have talked about these. I can have your phones and a microphone and talk to them. I'll be able to speak loud enough for the group and what people are saying. And so in order, if nothing will sign with me, I need to be prepared for that, the say, if we're going to do it. And what's what they are doing in the west wing? We try different things. How do you know, is it clear what he's saying?
Well, if, if nothing will work at all tonight, then I urge that we look into trying to improve things for next time.
Right. I mean, it's...
Alvaro's out there helping? Alvaro's out there helping?
I have been doing that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
It also helps if she has it printed, so she knows what they're saying, and then it makes that a lot easier. But without being printed, it becomes much more difficult.
Okay. Thank you, and thanks for the translation.
All right.
Mayor, nobody else has signed up, but I...
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Maybe do suggest that she asks the audience if anybody else wants to speak.
Yes. If you want to ask them in Spanish, we have one lady here that wants to be heard, but let's make sure the Spanish speakers understand.
If you will have her, please sign up after she speaks.
Señores, ¿te lo firmo, verdad? Después de hablar, yo la acompaño y se puede poner sonora.
With the clerk right over there.
My name is Teresa Ortega.
Yo vivo aquí en la Lake Home Park.
I live here in Lake Home Park.
Lake Home? Lake. Es difícil para mí pararme aquí para poder hablar, para poder expresar el sentimiento que siento al saber que tengo yo 15 años viviendo.
So it's very difficult for me to stand here in front of you and to try to express myself and to try to talk and, and to tell you what I feel. I have lived for 15 years.
Tengo tres hijos, dos ya graduados.
In this area, I have three children, two graduated.
Uno en Inglemore. Los dos se graduaron en Inglemore. Ahora tengo una niña en tercer grado.
Two of them graduated from Inglewood, and one of them... Two of them graduated from Inglewood, and one of them is in third grade, my daughter. She goes to Kenmore Elementary. I have lived in this area for a very long time, for a very long time, and it's- I feel that this area is extremely friendly. It's very comfortable, and I think it would be very tough for me to have to start again from zero somewhere else. I think it would also be very tough for my little girl to make new friends and to get comfortable with the new environment. But above everything, school, getting used to a new school is, would be very hard. And I say this out of my own experience because I've seen my older children go through it. And so all I want to ask you is to save my home.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. I believe you want to speak. If you will sign up after you've spoken, would be wonderful.
And then, Mayor, I do have one more person signed up.
Hi, I really appreciate this opportunity. My name is Janice Hoggett. I live in Inglewood Shores East. I live in a home that a dear, longtime friend, like a mother, lived in. And when she had cancer and was dying, I agreed to buy it. At that time, that way, the kids could all have a little something, and that's what she wanted them to have. But the house itself was really bad. One of those pre-'76, it had mold in it. And I had it pulled out and put a brand-new one in. I would not have done that if I'd have known what the situation in the park was because at that time, the rent was 720 a month. And I thought I could afford that, knowing that I was going to be retiring in a couple of years. I'm going to be 70 on my next birthday. And I had planned to retire then. But now, my rent, this last check I wrote was over $1,100. That's in three years. And so, the two things that I would like to put out is, if there's some kind of way to protect senior citizens, because that is now more than my entire social security check. And so for my husband and I to retire, everything is going to come, I mean, that's just, is some kind of, because they're not doing anything to fix the roads and stuff, they patch a leak in the road with, water leak with plastic pipe, which we drive over and it's going to break again. It's not a sustainable situation. And, but, I like living in the neighborhood that I am. And I really bought the place to live there for the rest of my life, if I could. And so I would hope that somehow that you would protect, do the overlay, and protect those places from going away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hoggett.
Mayor, I have one more person signed up. Is it Harry P. on 181st? Yes, sir.
If you'll state your name, please.
Oh, Harry Perfitter, please. I'm sorry. I thought she pronounced it, and I clarified it. As I reviewed some of the evaluation criteria that was put forth for the agenda, I note that in, for Lake Terrace Park at 700 Northeast 181st, there is no age restriction noted. And quite frankly, that's not correct because at least approximately 40% of the park is over 60. Several other people, myself included, over 70. And also, same situation is noted for 7021. And there is an elderly gentleman who came to these meetings and testified that he's been a park resident for 35 years. He's living on limited income, and he testified to that, he and his wife. I happen to be a single fellow. That inability or the lack of notation to consider the length of time that residents have been in place is significant. And why is it significant? I ask you, how many of you lived in the same home for 25 years? How many of you have lived in the same home for 35 years and are over 70? It puts a tremendous burden on people like that, especially those who have limited income. Furthermore, none of, there's been testimony about people having medical conditions. There is not, in this evaluation criteria, there is not one consideration of that. Not one, not mentioned at all. So it's irrelevant. I don't think it is. I think it's extremely relevant. And I hope you take that into consideration as you make your deliberations. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Perfitter.
Mayor, I have nobody else signed up.
Anybody else? Yes. If you will please sign up when you are finished.
Hello, good evening. My name's Melissa Riley. I'm the principal at Kenmore Elementary. And I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I've been following all along, thanks to Alvaro, who's here translating for our families. I know that you have a lot of tough decisions to make, and I know there's a lot of factors at stake. But if I could, I would tell you the name of every single student who lives within this mobile home community. I want you to know that in total, there are 26 students at Kenmore Elementary that live at 6905 Northeast 182nd Street, nine students who live at 7021 Northeast 181st Street. At 7614 Northeast Bothell Way, there's 15 students who live there. That is 15, that is 50 students out of 500, 10% of our population, K5, that reside within our community and are an important part and contributors to our school. That doesn't include our Head Start program, which serves 57 of the 300 estimated students in the greater Kenmore-Bothell area. That's only 19% of students who are being given a start that are afforded to a lot of people who are more affluent. I think it's really important to keep that in mind in your consideration, that these are families who have become part of North Shore School District for the same reasons that you and yours have made North Shore what it is, and reside here and can bid and can vie for homes in this area so that your children have an opportunity for the education that they deserve. These families within these communities and the surrounding apartments deserve to have the best education possible. We love on our students with all of our hearts. I know that the city of Kenmore has been all about love, whatever the most recent love project is. I think that that's something really important to keep in mind as you make decisions, that it does not disrupt the education of many of the students who are at stake here, who are low-income, free and reduced lunch, whose parents work really hard to support them and give them what they need to be at school, and that you make decisions that don't disrupt their educational experience any more than it needs, than it needs to be. And I come here not just for my own interest, but on behalf of these families and on behalf of my entire staff, who is currently learning and engaged in culturally competent practices, responsive practices, inclusive practices, high-leverage practices, who are understanding that our history did not set everyone up as equal. And so I plead to the board to make a decision that's about equity for all the students involved at Kenmore Elementary and in the surrounding neighborhoods.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. And Ms. Riley, if you'd be so kind as to sign up. Anybody else? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes. Come forward and please sign up when you're finished. Not yet. When you're finished.
I live at the mobile home park, Lakewood. I grew up in Kenmore.
And your name, please? Your name?
Fred Olson.
Fred Olson. Thank you.
I lived across the slough from my mobile home park. I fought for the firefighters because I was a firefighter for five years here when I was a volunteer. Else would like to live here. I had a lot of medical problems from the military. And this was the only place I could afford. I get $1,000 after serving in the military and the fire department. This is all I can afford. I have to go up to the VA hospital, and this is a very close place for it. I'm not trying to talk about me. I'm trying to talk about us. The mobile home park is like a little, fat, little town of its own. Everybody knows everybody. Why would you want to take that apart? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Mr. Olson?
Mr. Olson.
Mr. Olson? If you please go sign up. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir. You also, when you're finished, if you'd go sign up.
Good evening. My name is Alvaro Parra. I am the family advocate at Kenmore Elementary. And it is a pleasure for me to be here and be able to speak for our families. I have been working at Kenmore Elementary for about seven years, and I have seen families come and go. And in the last couple of years, I have seen a huge increase in the stress in our families. I have seen families scramble, coming to my office to cry, saying, what can we do? How can we do? I need to move. I have children come to my office and said, I don't want to move out of my place. And they have moved. I have seen that. And I have seen how, I have seen how this is disrupting their daily lives. I can see how, I have seen, I have experienced how these children are being, are being yanked out of their old environment, their families, the place where they have been growing up, they have been playing, their classmates. It breaks my heart because I see these people that, to me, they have become my family. I am not a Kenmore resident, but I feel like I'm Kenmore because Kenmore Elementary is my place of work. My families are my family. They are like, I feel very personal. And I really, really, really would like to express how a healthy community has a good mixture of every single social class. If a community is made out of one class, it's never going to be a healthy community. That is how we are as human beings. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parra. If you'd, yes. Anybody else? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you all for your comments. We certainly are going to be talking about the mobile home parks tonight. And, Mr. Prince, thank you for your comments. The one thing that has been said all throughout the planning commission meetings, and I know Ms. Anderson has said this on more than one occasion, we have no control on rents. There is nothing we can do about it. The state controls that, and we don't. So we are certainly, like I said, going to be talking about this tonight. I thank you for having the courage to stand up and talk to us. We truly appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Councilmember Denuski.
I'd like to pull the CIP off the consent agenda.
That's item B, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item P. Is there a motion?
It's moved.
And I'll second. So, on the consent agenda, minus item B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda stands approved, minus item B unanimously. All right, item B. Ordinance number 18-0469, adopting the 2019 to 2004 capital improvement program for surface water, parks, transportation, and city facilities. Councilmember Denuski.
So, yeah, after last week's meeting, I just felt like we kind of left the pavement preservation conversation without an ending at all. So, I'm fine with approving the CIP, but I just wanted to get it out there that we do need to look next year into, you know, what we want to do about pavement preservation. I know this year's budget is probably not where we can add more, but I guess I just wanted to get that out for the citizens that we're not just ignoring that problem.
Ms. Gregory, our finance director or the city manager, please address this.
Sure. In 2014, we did a pavement rating study that looked at the condition of all of our roads. And the recommendation of that study said that we need to be spending about $1 million a year on our pavement preservation to keep up with our, the life of our roads and keep them in the condition where they're at. Since then, we have been, and I think in most of the years since then, we have been spending in the neighborhood of $1 million a year, thanks to grants that we've been able to leverage. This year, we had another pavement rating study done that lowered our pavement rating score a bit from 80 to 78, and concluded that we need to be spending $2.6 million a year on pavement preservation. So that's a jump of $1.6 million a year that we need to be spending on pavement preservation. We're not, we don't quite understand why there's such a big jump. They were two very different consultants with different methodologies. But the conclusion of that consultant earlier this year was that we need to be spending $2.6 million a year on pavement preservation, things like chip seals, slurry seals, asphalt overlays, that sort of thing. Our current CIP, as you have proposed tonight, shows $450,000 a year for a couple of years, and then it jumps up to $550,000 a year for asphalt overlays. And that's funded from real estate excise tax, which can only be used for capital improvements and structural improvements such as asphalt overlays. So as you can see, that number's quite a bit lower than $2.6 million. We can do what we can to leverage some grants, but those grants aren't guaranteed by any means. And so it could, there could be a scenario, especially if you adopt your current CIP as it is, where we're spending about a half million a year on asphalt preservation, when we have an expert earlier this year recommending $2.6 million. Your current CIP with the funding sources that are planned, most of those funding sources can't be reprogrammed for asphalt preservation. So, for example, we got, we have millions in grants for the bridge, and also 68th Avenue's wanting to drive. We can't reprogram that grant money into asphalt overlay money. We can't reprogram park impact fees or traffic impact fees into asphalt overlay money. The sources of revenue that you do have in your planned CIP that you can reprogram are REIT and general fund. You don't have a lot of general fund money contributing to your CIP. You have about $21,000 next year of general fund money. And then, starting in 2021, you have $125,000 a year budgeted from the general fund to help pay for the future public works facility. On the REIT end of the equation, we're projecting to receive about $1.5 million a year in REIT. So about a third of the REIT is being programmed for asphalt preservation. But in 2019 through 2021, most of the REIT is being allocated to the walkway- But in 2019 through 2021, most of the REIT is being allocated to the walkways and waterways projects as well as to the Western Amish River Bridge. So it would be difficult to reprogram that money to asphalt overlays. Could we make cuts in other areas? Could we cut things in the general fund or other areas like that in the budget to provide room for asphalt overlays? We could certainly look at that, and I think that's a budget conversation we have to need, need to have next month. But even if you made cuts in discretionary services without touching things like police and criminal justice, it wouldn't even get you there. It wouldn't get you to the $2 million more you need a year for, for asphalt overlays. I think, I think asphalt overlays and pavement preservation in general begs a larger community conversation. And it also highlights the structural problem that cities like Kenmore, bedroom communities like Kenmore, have when it comes to their finances. We have revenues that are limited by the state. For example, our total property tax that we can collect per year is limited to 1% growth when we have things like police, which we don't have control over thanks to binding arbitration that grow at, at 5% a year. Just, just to keep up with police and, and not increase police programs, just status quo police, we have to find $150,000 of new money per year just to keep police the same. And those police expenditures, unless we wanted to cut actual positions, those police expenditures are largely out of our hands because third-party arbitrators determine what we pay our police officers. So anyway, I'm going on longer than I planned on, but I think the short answer is, yes, we are underspending on pavement preservation. And I think it begs a larger community conversation that we need to have over the next couple of years.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure everybody heard.
Are you okay?
Yep.
All right. So we're putting, yes, Councilmember Curtis.
So I guess at some point, I would like to see some discussion by the council for what programs potentially could be either cut or delayed. Because it's another way to balance budgets is just put things off farther down the line or cut things altogether.
All right. Then the chair will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 18 dash 0469, adopting a 2019-24 capital improvement program for surface water parks, transportation, and city facilities. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance number 18 dash 0469 is approved unanimously. All right. Next item on the agenda is Lake City Partners ending homelessness request for 2,000. Mr. Carlinsey.
Thank you, Your Honor. A question. Is there anybody from Lake City Partners here this evening? Oh, please, come on up if you could. Thank you. In partnership with the Kenmore Bothell Interfaith Group, or KBIG, Lake City Partners ending homelessness is requesting $2,000 from the city of Kenmore in order to provide full staffing and supervision for a co-ed shelter with beds for 30 men and women, starting November 22nd, or November 2nd, 2018. It would be for the month of November. And it would also be at the North Lake Lutheran Church as it was last year. So you may recall that last year, we had a similar shelter at that church for the month of October. This year, it's proposed for the month of November. Last year, you approved a $2,000 grant for the shelter, and so they're asking for another $2,000 grant for this year's shelter. One thing that we've been able to do is, we've, we've been able to get Lake City Partners in on the human services grant funding cycle for 2019 and 2020. And so in the future, they'll just be part of that grant application process. But for now, they are coming to you directly and requesting this funding.
I remember the discussion last year. Didn't we ask that they not do this at the last minute?
I can't say for sure what, what happened. I don't think they're asking at the last minute this time. They came to us probably a couple of months ago, I would say. And so we're bringing this to you now. But it's for similar purposes as it was a year ago. Would you like to say anything?
My name's Melanie Neufeld, and I'm the director of Lake City Partners ending homelessness. I'm grateful for your partnership last year and the opportunity to continue to partner with the Kenmore and Bothell Interfaith Group. We are really hopeful to bring people inside and, and create opportunities for folks to find housing by building relationships with folks. And we feel, really feel that by that relationship building, we create hope and motivation for folks to really try to exit into housing and create that opportunity for building community when, after people have been isolated from the experience of homelessness. And just hearing the, the conversation about the, the manufactured homes crisis and that, that concern and, and the continued increased costs of housing, really want to try to limit the increase in house, in homelessness, but knowing that that's, that's not a reality, that, that homelessness keeps increasing. So this shelter really is an opportunity to engage folks and, and try to create another pathway towards housing. But also here, you're championing, championing of affordable housing for, for folks. That's so critical for, for this community. So thanks for your consideration. Also heard the concerns of one of the first residents, talking about the fiscal concerns and, and accountability and our, our work with City of Seattle and, and King County. We're trying to ensure that that monitoring is in place. And I would say that your, your contribution of $2,000 really is matched by far by the in-kind donations of, of meals, the congregation spaces, and is an in-kind thing. And that ends up being about 30,000, $300,000 that, that gets contributed by, by the larger community and matches the, the city funding that we get from City of Seattle and City of Shoreline and other, other communities.
Questions? Councilmember Marshall.
I saw your behavioral standards agreement, I think, for residents mentioned in the materials. Did, does that include sobriety? Does it include any restrictions on weapons?
So certainly, we are trying to create safety for everyone, and that means by getting off, people off the street, we are creating safety for the larger community because folks are supervised in that, in, in that setting. So thinking about weapons, we ask people to hand in weapons if they have weapons and put that in a secure locked location. We know that the expectations around behavior is the most important thing for creating safety in that, that environment. And so the behavior expectations are outlined as you, as you saw.
But then you don't.
Sobriety. You asked about sobriety. Thank you. So the important thing is to get everybody inside who need, who is vulnerable. And there are people that are, have been drinking throughout the day. We do a check-in to see about their behavior. How are they today? And, and really get a sense of, can they manage in that space together with other people? And so that, that is our way of creating safety so people don't die on the street, to do that check-in. But we do allow people, if their behavior is quiet and they're not agitated, to really, you know, just have a safe place to sleep, eat, and, and feel like we're enabling a good behavior by, by allowing people to sleep in a supervised environment.
Councilmember Curtis.
So we talk a lot about homelessness, poverty, affordable housing. I see this as a great example for a public-private cooperation. I see it as a way to leverage $2,000 for a huge benefit. Other people are providing the food, the place to sleep, and other services. And I just see this as an opportunity for us to actually act on the issues we talked about.
Councilmember Danuski.
So this year's letter seemed to have a lot less detail than last year's letter. For just everybody's benefit, can you list some of the difference in extraordinary costs that you have for being in Kenmore, such as your busing and all that, that you don't necessarily have in other locations?
Sure. So the, there's some onsite costs for dishwasher and, and the shuttle that happens. And, and security is something that's a standard offering that, that we offer at each site. So those are, you know, a couple of things that are a little bit higher that volunteers have discerned that that's like the most important thing to have to make the shelter run in, in the best way at North Lake Lutheran. So we get $170,000 in total from the City of Seattle, King County, City of Shoreline. And all of that gets funneled towards proper staffing, making sure folks are trained and, and ready to deescalate situations.
And you're still planning to shuttle to and from the bus stop?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
And thank you for being here, first of all, on the shuttle. And that's just a, if they want to shuttle. You don't, you don't require anything on the shuttle, do you? It's just a convenience to the, to the residents that stay at the shelter?
Sure. And it's, it's a way to get people in and out faster without lingering in the community longer than they need to be. So it just, yeah, focuses their attention on getting, getting to the shelter. So that starts at 7:25. People will start getting shuttled in the evenings and, and directly get to the shelter that way. And then, in case of emergency, someone is, is then shuttled out during the evening.
Can you tell me what, what areas, excuse me, area cities also have the low barrier shelter in their cities?
The City of Shoreline, we have been partnering with City of Shoreline for many years. The Prince of Peace Lutheran Church is our location there. And City of Seattle is also, there's, there's at least two or, two or three locations that we've been using over the years.
Okay. And then I have a question, just because my, what I, what I have a problem with is just the low barrier aspect of it. And, and, and it's just a fundamental difference of looking at. I just think you have to have reasonable expectations. And as a community, and I remember last time when you were here, in our wrap-up, the, the statistics said that over two-thirds of the residents weren't even from this area, which, why is that relevant? Well, I, I think it's relevant because of the lack of expectations. And when it says on here that you can bring a weapon in, it just can't be visible. I mean, it says that right in your questionnaire. And you can be, you know, you can be on drugs or, or drunk. That doesn't matter. You just can't do it on-site. And so what that means is you could be basically in a completely different state of mind, comfortably go in there with a, a weapon, and nobody's going to stop you because they don't have any reason to stop you. And I, I just, I find it fundamentally wrong. And I think it's not what we want to do in our community. I think it's reasonable to, to set an expectation that we'll, we'll help people. We, we help lots of people. And there's lots of homeless shelters that do provide assistance, but I have a, I have a problem with this.
Sure. So yeah, the low barrier question is, is a big one for this community. And it's, it's best practice outlined by, by King County and the National Housing Alliance to End Homelessness. And it's, it's critical to then just focus on the fact that people need housing. They need a safe place to sleep, to stabilize. And the most important thing is to have conversations around housing and not set up barriers that prevent people to, for exiting into housing. So that's, that's where the low barrier piece comes. And because we're a small-scale shelter, we're, we really have the ability to get to know people, to know if they're a threat to the community and, and to really respond appropriately in, in, in tricky situations to helping to de-escalate and calling in necessary supports if, if, if that is needed. Yeah, I, I think our strength is knowing the population really well and, and, and knowing the folks that, that are the most vulnerable in our community and who might get a little agitated by their, their mental illness and knowing how to, just name that, name, name the agitation and what, what might be helpful in, in, in making the space safe for them tonight. So it's, it's a real person-centered approach in, in creating a, a pathway for everyone to, to be successful in finding housing and getting off the street.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I just want, I'm not going to say a whole lot, but I want to thank you for everything you guys are doing. And I recognize that the request is in part due to requests from the community, from neighbors who wanted the, the shuttle system in particular to be put into place. And I think your request is, is reasonable. And I look forward to another successful year partnering with you. So thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Question? Yes, Councilmember Marshall.
Could you expand on the security personnel that you have or training that you have for personnel to recognize and de-escalate and keep the place safe?
So for the evening time, we'll have a program manager on-site, a case manager doing the housing assessments, the coordinated entry housing assessments that are critical for, for getting into the King County system. And, and then two folks that are specifically dedicated to monitoring the space, as well as the, the many volunteers that are there to serve the meal and, and the two hosts that are on-site. So there's a lot of folks in that early evening to help with that assessment. Once people have settled down, there are at least two people on-site to, to monitor while people are sleeping. But yeah, that's, that's the way, yeah, it's, it's set up that, that seems, seems the most manageable financially.
So I'm not clear on whether, in the morning, they're required to ride the shuttle.
Yes.
They are required to, okay. And then there is no physical check for drugs or alcohol, whether they're carrying drugs or alcohol in there.
Not a physical check.
You just ask them.
Yes.
And there's no physical check for weapons?
No.
You just ask them.
We ask them.
So if there is a true interest in getting a job, getting housing, getting back into society, why aren't you asking about warrants so they can, you can help clear them up? Because I don't see there being any active counseling services with the tools necessary to get rid of warrants, to get rid of, of some of these issues that are holding them back.
The case management is housing-focused. So there, we recognize with the housing-first approach that once people are in housing, then they can manage some of those things. And I know that ends up being a barrier in, in many cases to have outstanding evictions or that kind of thing. So, so we do have funding through United Way to help with some of those fines that might be outstanding. And, and those, and to try to eliminate the barriers that might prevent people from getting into housing.
But you don't necessarily have contact with them during the day. Your contact is at night.
Actually, so our drop-in center in Lake City, we, we, with giving out bus tickets, we want people to have the opportunity to shower and do their laundry. And so we encourage people to take use, to make use of the drop-in center during the day, where we have continued ongoing relationships to, to figure out housing and, and to continue to respond to those other needs.
And what percentage of the 30 people or so that are, that are housed there take advantage of that?
I would say most of them because, yeah, it's a real opportunity to, to not smell, to, to, to have a shower and, and take care of their stuff.
But actually seek help to get rid of the warrants?
For sure.
There is a large percentage that do that?
I would say a large percentage that are utilizing the day services. And, and if that ends up being a barrier to housing, then we would help to eliminate that, for sure.
Any other questions? City Attorney. Oh, City Attorney.
Thank you. I'd like to explain how the award last year by the council was actually implemented and request clarification on a couple of items. For everyone's benefit, last year, the $2,000 award was implemented through a contract between the city, Lake City Partners, and a North Lake Lutheran Church. And in that contract, the amount of $2,000 was awarded for And in that contract, the amount of $2,000 was awarded for the Lake City Partners and the church to use for two things. One was operation of the shelter by the church, and the other was provision of services by Lake City Partners, which was described as provide services to individuals who use the shelter. And so I'd like to suggest to whoever's going to make a motion, it sounds like there might be what the motion should be, but I need clarification on two items and light up what is said in the letter. And is your last name Newfeld?
Yes.
Thank you. So Ms. Newfeld, it says that in partnership with KBIG, Lake City Partners is requesting $2,000. Which organization shall we put on the contract?
Lake City Partners Ending Homelessness is the 501(c)(3).
Okay, thank you. And then it says that the services are provide full staffing and supervision for a co-ed shelter. Could you elaborate on that a little bit so we can state it correctly?
The co-ed shelter?
Well, it says, provide full staffing and supervision for a shelter.
Yes, so there's a program manager that's onsite plus at least two shelter monitors.
So is it accurate to say that it is to pay for staff?
Sure, yes.
And how about the supervision?
The supervision is provided by the...
Not a staff person?
By the program manager.
Okay, thank you. Is it all right if we say it's to pay for staff and a program manager?
Yes, thank you.
So if there is going to be a motion, I would suggest that the motion would be that the city council approves the award of $2,000 to Lake City Partners Ending Homelessness, which will be implemented through a contract between the city and Lake City Partners and authorize the city manager to sign.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Who was the second?
You can pick, Deborah or Deputy Mayor.
Councilmember Shabnik?
Councilmember Marshall?
So would this approval then be subject to our vote, our future vote, on low-barrier shelters? In other words, if we, are we going to give this money if we were to approve it, we'd give it now, but we could later then vote as we're, I think, on the agenda to say, okay, no, there will be all these various restrictions or no restrictions on low-barrier shelters?
So my understanding is this is happening this year, this year has already been approved?
Correct.
So the funding would be for this year, and once you make it, it is for this year. And there would be another request for funding in our human services package for '19 and '20 that we will be debating in November, October and November. So we're only voting on 2,000 for November. Any other questions?
Well, and just a clarification, I believe it's on the agenda for next week, actually.
That's got to do with that, but November's already been approved.
Shelter, yes, understood, but we will be discussing the low-barrier shelter issue next week.
Right. Any other questions? Hearing that, Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Deputy Mayor Irving?
Yes.
Councilmember Shabnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Five-two.
Motion passes five-two.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda, mobile home park approaches. Ms. Bent and Mrs. Anderson?
Good evening, council. So tonight's agenda item continues the discussion on the topic of preservation of existing affordable housing in relation to the six mobile home parks we have in Kenmore. And presently, there are no regulations in the city that would prevent or mitigate closure of a park in Kenmore. And the council adopted a temporary moratorium on redevelopment of mobile home parks to allow time to consider options that would prevent closure, make closure less likely, or address the impact of a closure. And after many meetings and public input, the Planning Commission presented four options to the council on July 9th. On July 16th, staff presented information on financial assistance strategies that could support the land use options. On July 23rd, council direction was to include a fifth option for a protective zoning and also to explore options for limited-term preservation. So tonight, staff is asking for council direction on the options and how to apply those to each of the mobile home parks. There are three options related to long-term preservation, three for limited-term preservation, and one that would allow redevelopment with preservation of affordability. Staff has provided tools in your packet to assist council in decision-making, and based on council direction tonight, staff would then begin to draft code amendments and/or explore options for financial strategies. So tonight, we have representatives from Arch, Arthur Sullivan and Mike Stanga, and Laurie, our senior planner. And I'd like to turn this over to Laurie to go over the information that was in your packet. And then also, we're here this evening to respond to any questions that you may have. And we're having trouble with technical difficulties at the moment.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So my presentation is going to be very brief, and I wanted to just, again, remind you that there are six mobile home parks in the city. There are two on Northeast 175th Street, Inglewood East and Lakewood Villa. Those two are restricted to seniors 55-plus. Certainly, there are seniors living in other parks, but these are the two where we are aware there is a specific stricture about that. Kenmore Village is up along SR 522, farther to the east. And then there are two on Northeast 181st Street, Lake Terrace is on the north side of the street, and unnamed park is on the south side of the street. Those two parks are owned by the same person. So although there are six parks, there are five owners. And then Lakewood is on Northeast 182nd Street. So in your packet at this time, we created what we called a decision tree that we hoped would help with this discussion. You may decide that you want to consider a single approach to all of the parks. The Planning Commission, on the other hand, had decided to look at each park individually. And so the purpose of this tree was just to sort of make smaller decisions that would ultimately lead you to a conclusion, to an option of the seven options that are before you. So I'm just going to walk through and talk a little bit about the tree and then turn it over to you for your discussion. So the first question is, are you interested in preserving the mobile home park or allowing redevelopment? And at your last meeting, you'll remember that we talked about a number of priorities and how you balance the priorities determined what your approach would be. If you were interested in allowing redevelopment, you could do that with affordability. There would be an upzone to properties and then relocation plans and replacement units. Without affordability, there would be no change to the existing condition except perhaps a longer notice of closure than the one-year estate requirement, a relocation plan, and consideration of homeowner assistance. If the desire to preserve the mobile home park, if the other choice, the other green box there, is selected, then it leads you to four different options. You can do voluntary short-term preservation, a mandatory short-term preservation, a mandatory long-term preservation, or a long-term preservation through purchase. Again, depending on which box you end up in, then you, for two, the mandatory short-term preservation and the mandatory long-term preservation, you can consider whether you would be interested in landowner compensation or no landowner compensation. So I hope this was helpful. The goal was to make this decision a little bit easier, it's a very difficult decision. And with that, I will stop talking, except to say one more thing, sorry. In many cases, we've been talking about an overlay, and I just really want to clarify that protective zoning is what we're considering. It may be an overlay, which is something you put over an existing zoning, or it may be a rezoning. So if you're talking about overlay, you're really talking about some sort of protective zoning.
Councilmember Danuski?
One question on the long-term preservation. What happens if a park goes into disrepair?
So it depends on how that long-term preservation occurs. Are you talking about with the upzoning or are you talking about purchase? There are two long-term preservations. If you're talking about the upzoning approach, then in that case, what happens is that the development opportunities, if you're considering landowner compensation, the landowner increased potential for units is transferred to another property. So you're basically buying the development rights for the property. If that occurs, then a covenant would be put in place over the property. And a covenant is a case where you are ensuring that for the long-term maintenance occurs. I mean, you have to preserve the use.
And then what happens if they don't?
It would be an enforcement action, and if it was a covenant, then they would be breaking the covenant.
Okay, thank you.
Could I add a little more to that? We did have a provision in here that we were, that's one of the bullets under there in the zoning scenarios, where sort of from a practical point of view, if someone doesn't take care of any of their properties, it affects how much rent they may receive and therefore their economic returns. But the other is, if it were being due to some hardship, like they just couldn't make the economics work anymore, then they could come to the city and at that point request saying, look, the economics just aren't working, we need you to, we'd like you to reconsider the zoning for the property.
Okay, thank you.
So let's say we went with the preserve. I don't care whether you've got option one, two, three, five, six, or seven. The owner can just continue to raise the rent. And there's not much that can be done about it, and gradually, he's got no tenants and his land is free to be sold.
You're right that there is no rent control. We have heard a number of times that operating a mobile home park is a viable business. And I would assume that if the rents went to a certain level, that the park, he would have trouble, he or she would have trouble getting tenants. And I don't quite know that's the way it is now. And so I'm not sure that we would be doing anything special, except to say that the best use for this property with the change in zoning is a mobile home park. And the other uses that you might want to put on the property are not, would not have as great a return. So the mobile home park becomes the best use for the property.
So even if the tenants were slowly forced out because of rent increases, the only option the landowner has would be to keep it as a trailer park, empty, or sell it to another person to keep it as a trailer park.
Well, that would be the most valuable use in the list of uses.
But is that the only use? Could he sell it to somebody else for redevelopment at that point because it's empty?
But it still has the zoning in place.
Okay, fine.
Now, the one correction I would make is, there is one scenario, and it may go in tandem with your land use actions. If you put that land use action in place, then one of the most interested buyers down the road may be the housing authority or the residents or that. And their financing, this is where option one or option two comes into play, which is what happened in Redmond on two occasions now in the last 15 years. An owner came on board who said, I will be happy if you give me some financing to keep the rents at a prescribed level. So that is what's meant by that fourth box. Now, that could be worked in hand-in-hand with the zoning action as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, actually, and I'll have more comments as I hear from some of my peers here, but on your question, Mayor, I think it would seem like if the overlay required it to be a mobile home park and a park owner continually raised the rents, well, I think it's logical to assume you're going to drive out the tenants that have the lower-valued units first because those are probably the ones that, it makes it the most inequitable. And then I would assume the property owner could just bring in a newer mobile home, put it in there, and could justify higher rents a lot easier. That just, if I were to see that play, your scenario play out, that's how I'd see it happen.
Councilmember Curtis?
So I'm going to start with general comments, and I also will reserve all my detailed comments till the appropriate place. First of all, I really found this decision tree very helpful. Trying to think of all those individual boxes and all the little variations and differences, it was overwhelming to me. So this is sort of like a medical chart, you know, if this, then you go here, and here's the options. And so it worked really well for my brain. So again, just my high-level thoughts and kind of bullet points rather than necessarily a perfect flow. This is complex with lots of competing interests. We aren't pushing mobile home park owners to develop, nothing has really changed in years. We, in fact, are trying to be proactive, that's why we put the moratorium in place. So things wouldn't suddenly change, so we'd have time to study it. And the purpose isn't to displace people. I've heard a lot of people say that we're displacing people. And that's not the purpose of this whole effort and study, it's in fact to see what we can do to preserve, not to displace. And then just a reiteration that none of this affects the rates or the owner responsibilities. Councilmember Shabnik and I took a tour of all the mobile home parks over the weekend, and it was really, really helpful to actually see them in person. And the quality, the number, there are a lot of things that varied from park to park. Some of them, I think, in my mind, have some safety concerns where there's only one way in and one way out, fairly crowded, fairly close, you know, fire concerns, other things. Others are very open, wide streets, way to get in, circulate, traffic. So just a lot of differences in the parks. And so at some point, I've got ideas on each of the seven options, but those are just the high-level thoughts.
Any other questions, Councilmember Marshall?
And just to emphasize or clarify, number, both, both options, one and five, begin with protective zoning at the top, is that right? Thanks.
Councilmember Shabnik?
Yeah, I want to reiterate what Milton said, it was very helpful to tour the parks, and I'll also make my kind of overarching comments. I want to thank staff and the Planning Commission for the many, many, many meetings and much more time, of course, than we have to study this issue. And I want to recognize the interests of at least four groups of people, and I said this earlier, but I think it's important to reiterate. Two groups we know about, and they are the residents, the homeowners themselves, and the park owners. But the other two groups are the people who aren't in the room, and those are current and future residents of Kenmore, people who... And those are current and future residents of Kenmore, people who are clamoring for more affordable units and to live in our community. So I feel a responsibility to the overarching goal to retain and increase affordable options in our city as a whole. And I also want to appreciate the work of the Planning Commission to help us understand the unique characteristics of each park. Clearly, there's a desire to retain the option of mobile home park living. It's very unique. But also recognize the differences in the parks in terms of their potential, of the underlying zoning to create affordable units, and the current percentage of units lost to the community and value lost to the owner if the mobile home parks as a whole are retained. So there's a balance here. Tonight, I also heard of other criteria, the challenges of moving, particularly if you have medical conditions and issues of being on fixed income. There's a lot of things to balance, and I just want to recognize some of those issues and put them out there.
I guess Councilmember Smith did a better job of expressing some of my concerns in his explanation, because that's my fear, is that the rents will increase, and slowly but surely. The people on fixed income, the people that can least afford them, it's going to have their rents raised, and they're eventually going to have to get out. And homes will be replaced with newer homes and higher-paying tenants. And that doesn't solve my problem. That doesn't solve my problem protecting it for the seniors and for those on fixed incomes that absolutely need a place to live. So I sure wish there was an easier way to make these decisions. Counselor Dunuski.
Yes, this flow chart was really interesting, and so was the new options of the short-term preservation. And, you know, I'm not sure yet if I'm in favor of that or not, but one thing that has, I've been kind of struggling with is, we're having this whole affordable housing conversation, and this is our very, very first bite of that, but we haven't had the overarching conversation yet on affordable housing, what we want to do. So having an option out here on the table for short-term may allow for us to have, like, a broader conversation before we make long-term decisions. So anyway, thank you for at least putting those out there.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to make one point, which is that in option one or option five, the notion is that this protective zoning would go into effect. But there is the option there and in option two for a covenant that would actually preserve the affordability as well as the use. So that, in fact, in several of these options, if there were a covenant that went along, the affordability would also be retained.
Deputy Mayor.
But under option two, that's assuming a willing seller, correct? Okay.
Any other questions, comments? So you're looking for direction from us?
Yes. So you have the options in front of you. There are six parks. So I think the first maybe thing to decide is, do you feel that there is one option that fits all parks? Or would you like to consider each park individually?
So what we're trying to do here is provide preliminary direction to staff on the preferred land use and financial assistance strategies for the city's six mobile home parks. Counselor Smith.
Silence is painful, so I will add a few more comments. So in some ways, the flow chart made it much easier for me. In other ways, it actually made it harder, because it showed how viable different options are. And I was initially more of a fan of looking at the TDR option. And so, and it looks like that's probably not going to have legs to it. So I would be, you know, I'd be in favor of at least, I guess, eliminating that one as an option, since it doesn't sound like staff would like to go that direction either, and there's a little more difficulty in that, as I understood it from that cover letter.
Which option are you talking?
Dealing with the TDRs.
So option four is, or no, option one is the one that talks about TDRs. I don't think staff is concerned about that approach.
Okay.
I think we felt that, you know, it's creative, but hey, we're up to the challenge.
Okay.
I think we actually could craft something.
Okay, good. So that's good, then. And then, so I'm just, I'm going to jump a little bit over to a, kind of a higher-level view of how I'm looking at it, and kind of why I'm more open to whatever we can do creatively. But, you know, I think the most difficult part here is short-term predictability for the tenants. It's like, everybody wants to know that they have some sense of assurance that their investment they've made has some value, at least in the short term. And long-term, that, I'll get to that in a second. But I would say that throughout the options, I do think, looking at something that can provide some sort of short-term, and whether short-term is defined as, you know, two, three years, or five or 10 years, I'm not even sure. But I think that that's an important part in this, just so that there can be some level of continuance and assurance. And when you have, when you can at least look beyond three or three years out, or five years out, it allows you to plan and make your own personal business decisions a little differently. And it gives you an opportunity to plan easier. And so that's why I think some level of short-term assurance is nice. Long-term, I think long-term predictability is, benefits both parties. I think long-term, a tenant benefits if they know, if they truly understand that there is development potential that can occur in a particular park. And I think it benefits the property owners in understanding what their investment is and the investment they made. And third, the community. The community created development and zoning plans with the sole purpose of looking at, how do we want to, where do we want to define density? And what's the one thing that constantly comes back over and over again, is that you want to provide density near transit. And so that doesn't mean that has to happen overnight, but I do think that, long-term, that makes sense to look at and say, "We didn't plan a downtown with the intent of having low-density development there forever." And so, so I look at it as, if they're in these options, what I'm kind of trying to scope out is the best way to provide short-term assurance and predictability with retaining the long-term potential for redevelopment.
So I have a few questions, and then I'll go through my logic, how I sorted through all these. So the questions first. What is the affordability requirement for downtown commercial and the downtown residential zones?
So currently, there is no requirement. Requirement does not exist. There are incentives through a chapter called Residential Density Incentives. That's a chapter that has not historically been used in Kenmore. I think we've had one inquiry since incorporation. It's a holdover section from King County. So, and again, that is a voluntary option, that you get, in one, in some cases, one extra unit for every affordable unit at a certain level, in other cases, two extra units for everyone. But there's no requirement.
All right. Then I have a few questions relating to the mobile home park that's down by the bowling Is that mobile home park in the TOD?
Yes, it is.
And do we have any thoughts on what is the best way to integrate that land and housing into the TOD, if something actually happened down there?
I'm not sure I quite understand your question.
So, as opposed to keeping it as a separate mobile home park, and like that's, then the TOD is irrelevant. But it is part of the area that we've designated and chosen for density.
Right.
Has the city given any thought on how that might be incorporated or integrated into some eventual TOD?
So we've looked at if, so the TOD is voluntary. But if someone wanted to develop a TOD on that parcel, it's three acres in size, and a maximum, a minimum of 60 dwelling units per acre through the TOD, a maximum of 150. So if someone were to say, "I would like to redevelop that property at the maximum density," that would be 450 units. And you can cap the affordable units that are required at 10%. So there probably would be potentially enough affordable units to compensate for the loss of the existing units. I think that's what you're asking.
Yes, yes. Last question, and then I'll go to my thought process. What wetland buffers restrict that area? As we drove through, it seemed like it was pretty close to Swamp Creek.
Right. Yeah, I'm sure it's non-conforming, the development down there currently. It's 150-foot buffer. Again, the parcel is three acres, but the density is not restricted by the wetland. It would only be restricted by the setbacks and the heights. And I believe the TOD height is, in that area, is 65 feet. I would have to double-check that.
Okay. So density could still be put in there despite the setbacks.
Right. Now, whether they could get the, I mean, the whole 150, or the whole 450 units that they might be eligible for, I don't know. I haven't done that.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that information. So this is how I looked at the decision tree. So I'm against five and six. And the logic is, anything taking away property rights with no landowner compensation, fee just feels wrong to me. They've served our community and our citizens by providing affordable housing, and it feels unfair to say, "Well, you've done this great thing for our city for several decades, and we're going to reward you by taking something from you and give you nothing in return." So I kind of checked those two off. So now I'm down to only five instead of seven. The next group, I really see the two parks over on the Smamish River as ideal for the mandatory long-term preservation with landowner compensation. Those two parks alone account for a fairly large percent of all the mobile home units total. So it would preserve a lot of the units. And it's in an area where the density for that area will never really allow for much more density than is there now. So basically, we're not taking anything or much from the landowners by limiting them and saying, "This will be a mobile home park forever." So long-term preservation for those two would be my choice. So there, I've taken care of three options and two parks. The next group, I, so short-term preservation just kicks the, this would be number three, six, and seven. Short-term preservation just kicks the decision to future councils. It doesn't solve the real problems. At this point, no owners have plans for developing soon, so it's probably unlikely to actually change anything in the short haul. So it's sort of as if we did nothing and just left it all alone. It would just sit there.
I need to jump in here, because we had some, there are some landowners who are interested in more immediate redevelopment. The one, the park on Bothell Way, and the two on Northeast 181st Street. Both of those owners told us that they were interested in a more immediate sale for potential redevelopment.
All right. Thank you. Let's see, for number two, that's the one that seems like it's using city funds to buy mobile home parks. So I'm not a big fan of using city funds for that. If somebody else wanted to put their money in, that'd be fine. But I wouldn't be in favor of the city buying them. Number, let's see, then, the three downtown developments, I think option four would be my preference. They're in the city core area, where we are developing a high-density, walkable community near regular bus service, rapid bus transit as that develops. We're developing downtown. It'll have amenities like Town Square, the Hanger Building, skate park, restaurant services. And a fair amount of work went into this area, a lot of citizen input, to ask, "What do we want our downtown to look like?" And I think the high density is what really fits the area the best. So for the three downtown parks, I would recommend option four. And then the last park that I have is the one down by the bowling alley. And honestly, I'm really stumped on that one. I honestly don't, if it could become a TOD development and put a lot of housing there, with a lot of it being affordable, my favorite study is still the one that shows the average American is willing to walk two and a half blocks to their bus. And it's within two and a half blocks of fantastic bus service as that develops over the years. So I would probably go for option four, development with the TOD.
Counselor Marshall.
I move that we direct staff to move forward with options one and five.
There's a motion to direct staff to move forward with options one and five.
And I'm sorry, as applied to all parks.
Applied to all parks. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Moved in, seconded. Okay, there's a motion on the table. We are now discussing options one and five and directing staff to move forward with them. Is there any conversation? Counselor Dunuski.
I guess I'm not ready yet to agree to that, because I'm not ready with, I don't think this conversation's over. But I would not support anything that did not have landowner compensation.
Counselor Smith.
I would oppose it for the exact same reason.
And that's one and five, which has landowner compensation.
Counselor Dunuski.
Five does not.
Five does not.
Five just.
Counselor Dunuski. I mean, Counselor Shrubnik, sorry.
I concur with my colleagues that would vote against this for the same reasons.
Are there any further comments? Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I don't have any issues ensuring that a successful, profitable business continues as it currently is, as we would see under option five. The landowners there are making money. And I don't see it as our duty to compensate them for unused zoning. I just don't see that as our place. And I think if I, again, I said this last time, if I have to choose between siding with the owners and siding with the homeowners, I'm going to side with the homeowners. So I'm in support of one or five. I'd prefer five personally.
Counselor Smith. Nothing. All right. The motion's on the table. To direct staff to proceed with options one and five.
As applied to all parks.
As applied to all parks. They're saying no further discussion. Clarence speak, Thaith Roll.
Counselor Dunuski?
No.
Counselor Curtis?
No.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Shrubnik?
No.
Mayor Baker?
Nope.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Bill, two, five.
All right. Yes, Counselor Smith.
I'd like to make a motion that we eliminate option five as an option, because it specifically calls out no landowner compensation. And I think that there's been plenty of words said over a number of these meetings that that is something that we don't endorse. And so I make the motion that option five is eliminated from this matrix.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. But I have, you have a question, five and six.
Well, the motion right now is five.
I was just trying to, I'm trying to just.
You want to pick one at a time?
If we can make hay on one, then that's progress. If we can make hay on one, then that's progress.
All right.
Was it seconded?
Yeah, it was seconded. Councilmember Curtis. City Attorney. Without compensation, legal implications? Could it be considered as a taking?
Have to admit that I'd have to think about it. And I would recommend to the council that it would not discuss in public the legal implications of any option.
All right, Councilmember Shrubnik?
Well, point of clarification, I mean, we already got a ruling on this earlier. We have an email from the city attorney's office saying that option five, as long as there is a relief valve for the land-
Oh, is that the one that has the relief valve? See, it's not on this chart.
Right, as long as it had a relief valve was appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall?
So in terms of discussion and in favor of no compensation to park owners, indeed, as Councilmember Herbig pointed out, this is the, the private sector. And yeah, I see it as the, the city's duty, in this instance, more to look to its more needy citizens rather than the, the park owners to aid private capitalism, as it were. Capitalism is supposed to function on its own fairly well, I've always heard. So I don't see that aspect as something the city should compensate. And we should keep the option open for, I think, that, that interest, the interest of the park residents.
Councilmember Smith?
So just, so there's a little bit of clarification. I am eliminating opti, my motion is to eliminate option five. What it is not saying is that there may not be some other, some other option that gets twisted a bit, that may have some level of landowner non-compensation, or there may be a short-term period where there's some, some type of overlay or zoning. So this doesn't mean that that would not possibly exist. It just means this is one way to get one very clear option off the table that, that appears that there's not strong sentiment for.
Councilmember Curtis?
So, you know, despite the fact that capitalism as a theory can be discussed, the fact is these landowners have provided a service to Kenmore for some of them over fifty years. This is, I think some of the oldest parks are about fifty years old, as I remember. And so, yes, people have made money, but they've also provided affordable housing. And that's why they continue to exist. So I think to, to reward them with saying there will be no compensation at all by taking away and limiting your rights to what you do with your personal property, just like I say, to me, it doesn't feel right. So I'd be in favor of, of the motion.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand why some might say that the landowners were doing a service, but I don't think they were doing a service. They were making money. They were in it to make a profit. They're still making a profit. Option five would not take away their ability to make a profit. In fact, there's a relief valve, as we've talked about, if something weird happens and they aren't able to make their business model work. This is the most straightforward way to ensure that we preserve this valuable pool of affordable housing throughout the city. And, and it's a way to do it in an equitable, equitable way, especially if we do it at all of the parks at the same time, rather than picking and choosing winners and losers, which is where I think this discussion is probably headed, unfortunately. So I'm against this motion, and I'll be voting no.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
I would support this, not necessarily for the exact same reasons, but I, I don't feel like option five provides the balance between the interests that I was referring to earlier. It also does nothing to help control the rent issue compared to something like an option two, where there would be more control over the rules and, and how leasing and renting occurs.
Any more comments? Questions? All right, so the motion before us then is to eliminate option number five. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Baker?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Pass.
All right. So back to the issue at hand, giving staff direction. Any further comments, suggestions? Councilmember Curtis?
So my preference would be to give the staff direction to, in fact, have a differential between the parks rather than manage them all the same. I think the ones that are in, the three that are in the downtown area, I think are in direct conflict with our downtown zoning and our downtown planning that has had a lot of citizen input. And to just throw all that out and say, "With a new issue, we're going to ignore everything we've done for the last twenty years," just seems very, very weird to me. But I have no problem for the two on the Sumamish River of putting the number one option in place. So I guess, so that would be my recommendation, that we do treat at least the downtown three separate from the two on the Sumamish River. I don't have a strong feeling on the other one.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
I, I would, I'm very close in agreement with Councilmember Curtis with a slight clarification. And that is the downtown commercial would include a slightly different group of three. It's the two on 181st and the one on 520, or off of 522. The park on 182nd is in the downtown residential zone, which is actually a little bit different character. But with that caveat, I do very much agree that I would like to take the direction, I would like to provide direction to staff to treat the grouping, three groupings differently. The downtown residential, the downtown commercial, and the two on the river, which are completely different in many respects. And I could describe those, those differentiations. But I'd like to get to the point where we could provide direction to differentiate.
Is that a motion?
It isn't yet.
It isn't yet. Councilmember Marshall?
I move that we direct staff to treat all the parks the same, no matter what our decision is here, so that we treat all parks the same. So I make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Councilmember Danuski?
I have a different topic now. We have a motion on the table.
Okay, fine, we'll come back to you. Motion on the table then is to treat all parks the same. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor?
I mean, well, I recognize the work, and I appreciate the work that Councilmember Curtis put in on the downtown task force years ago, and the work that Councilmember Shrubnik put on the planning commission, and I think the downtown task force even, right? I'm still very reluctant to put our goal of, to put our, our zoning wants above the very human needs that we have heard expressed in this room tonight. And I'm very reluctant to set a table where we tell the folks down on 175th that they are safe and their homes are safe. But we tell folks living in other parks that their homes are not. I recognize there's differences between the parks. But I'm very reluctant to support anything where we end up picking winners and losers like that. It just doesn't feel right to me. So I'll be voting against the motion. Oh, you're voting for the motion, sorry.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Herbig put his finger on it, that it's really a question of equity. And with great respect to the planning of the last twenty years and everybody involved and their visions, but circumstances, circumstances change. I grew up here. I would have never have conceived going out to dinner at a place across the street from Arrowhead Elementary and paying like a hundred and fifty bucks for my family to afford to have dinner, much less. I would never have conceived of the property values going up to this extent. And then never to have seen or thought about, okay, what's going to be the effect of that upon people whose incomes are fixed and are low income? And we want to tell them, "Well, you happen to be in the midst of our very downtown where we want to pack in a bunch of brand-new condos, or we want to put in a bunch of expensive stuff." It doesn't strike me as equitable. We have a chance here to preserve affordable housing in the midst of this crisis. And I think it needs to be done uniformly. I think it needs to apply to everybody uniformly because they're in, I think, economically in a, in a similar boat. It's a question of fairness.
Councilmember Danuski?
I'll be voting against this, not necessarily because I wouldn't have come to that answer, but I'm not, once again, not further enough in the conversation to just put that out there right yet.
Councilmember Curtis then, Councilmember?
So in the past, we've had discussions on having a walkable city. And the 181st is our only street in the city that would ever qualify for that. And to have that, you have to have enough density and enough successful businesses that there's a reason for people to walk down the street. So you park at one spot, and you walk down the street, and you stop in here, and you look there. And I really believe that if we do things that limit that street from developing, that it will seriously affect our ability to develop a walkable downtown street area.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Well, I just want to be clear that my thought process is not zoning versus people. It's people. And the nuance to that is there's people living in mobile home parks now, and there's people who want affordable units going forward, and there's people who want other units going forward. And there's a balance between the desires of people who are living in the mobile home parks now and looking to the future. And I feel a responsibility to look at those issues. I also don't think that it's a decision between safe and unsafe. There are many options here that we haven't discussed at the level of nuance that provide significant assurance of short- or long-term preservation. And I hope that we get to those discussions. There are very unique characteristics of these parks. The parks on the river, for example, there, there is no way that we could get hardly any additional units there. It is not possible. So there is almost no issue of balance to be even considered because that, that is almost the highest and best use. There is some lost value, but almost no lost density. And there's no desire on the part of either of those property owners to sell. And there's significant difficulties for the residents that would need to be moved or displaced with very no, with almost no benefit. So that is a very unique situation. And that is in contrast to, for example, the two parks on 181st and Kenmore Village on 522, where existing zoning with incentives and the TOD overlay could dramatically increase the number of units and the number of people who have access to our city and could live in our city affordably and in other units that are not as affordable. But both preserve affordability and increase the number of people who could come to Kenmore. So the issue there would be providing some level of security and preservation so that people know what the future is, rather than kicking the can down the road. So I, I again, want to stress that these have very unique characteristics. And I would like to provide that direction.
Is that a motion?
No, there's a motion on the table.
No, that's a very good motion. Councilmember Marshall?
I also wanted to add that Lakewood in particular is, as our principal, Ms. Riley, noted, the home of many of our students of Kenmore Elementary. It's our low-income school here in Kenmore. It's where my kids go to. It's their friends. I think that if we, we may have a disparate impact if we say, "All right, these are going to be different," even though it's ostensibly for the various reasons that the planning commission gave, which are objective in themselves. There's no question about it. I'm not questioning the planning commission's integrity at all. But the impact, I think, would be disparate in terms of our Spanish-speaking and Latino population. And it would, it would not be fair to carve out the different parks. I think we ought to treat them all equally.
All right. Any further discussion? Motion on the table is to treat the parks the same. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
No.
Mayor Baker?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes. I mean, excuse me, no.
No. Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
No.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Fail two, five.
All right. What direction do we want to give staff?
Okay.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. And the motion is direction to treat the parks differently based on their unique characteristics and unique issues. And there would be in three groupings. The two on the river, and I shouldn't name them, I apologize. Inglewood East and Lakewood Villa. The one on 182nd, which is Lakewood Mobile Home Park. And taking the remaining three together based on their underlying characteristics. And those are Lake Terrace, Perkins, and Lake, am I correct here? Kenmore Village. I believe I have those correct.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Clerk, do you have the three groupings?
Yeah, I want to make sure I'm correct. So direct staff to treat the parks differently due to their unique characteristics. The two on the river, Inglewood East, Lakewood Villa, the one on 181st.
182nd.
Excuse me, 182nd. And then the three, Lake Terrace, Perkins, and Kenmore Village separate.
Is that correct? Okay. Fine. Councilmember Smith, did you have something?
Well, actually, I was, I actually was going to hope you were going to simplify it. We could deal with the one south of the highway separately and then deal with it. But, so I have to process my thoughts here a little more. I was just trying to, I was taking a similar angle, just a little different.
Okay.
Just sort of one step at a time.
Okay.
Councilmember Curtis?
So I, I like this grouping of three because I really think it, it does the best job of sorting them into piles. The Sumamish, I think, is very different, those two. The Lakewood, so if, if we in some way protected the two Sumamish ones and the Lakewood, the one upon 182nd, at a different level than the other three, we would in fact have protected most of the affordable housing units, including the, the students, many who go to Kenmore Elementary, the, without affecting the downtown ability to develop. So I think these three groupings would be pretty easy to sort out and come with a recommendation.
Councilmember Danuski?
I'm kind of where Councilmember Smith was. If you had just left it at the 175th, I would have supported it. But I'm not sure about the rest of the group yet, so I'd be opposed.
Can I make an amendment, or do we?
Sure.
I would make an amendment to the motion that we separate the, and deal with them based on the division of SR 522. So we've got four north of the highway, and we have two south of the highway.
Okay, so the motion then is to modify- Okay, so, the motion then is to modify, the amendment is to modify and deal with them as two groups.
Yes.
North and south of the highway. Is there a second?
Almost where I was going with that, but not quite.
All right. There is no second, so it would die for a lack of a second. Do you want to try to rework that a little bit?
I'll let somebody else.
Fine.
Attempt.
Councilmember Danuski?
Well, I mean, we've got amendment after amendment here. It's getting complicated.
First one failed, so.
Yeah, the first one's done. Oh, we didn't get it.
Didn't get it done.
Okay. Okay, so I'd make an amendment to your motion that we first talk about and make a decision on the parks at 175th.
So, that would almost be a new motion because we're getting rid of the other two.
Yeah, exactly.
The easiest way to do it then would be vote this one down and then come back with a new one. So, if there's no further discussion on this one, will the clerk please take the role on breaking these into three different groups?
No. Oh, yes. That is the motion.
Councilmember Shrubnik's motion, okay.
What?
Councilmember Curtis? Councilmember Danuski?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
No.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Failed.
All right. Back to no motion on the table. Councilmember Danuski?
Like to, actually, I'll just go right out there. I'd like to make a motion for the two on 175th to go for option one.
I'll second that.
So, this is, okay. The motion then is to, the two south of 522, go with option number one. It's voluntary, short-term presentation.
No, it's mandatory, long-term.
Never mind, never mind.
Mandatory, long-term presentation.
Yeah, mandatory, long-term.
With owner compensation.
With owner compensation.
There was a second.
There was a second. Councilmember Curtis, any discussion? Councilmember Shrubnik?
Just a little discussion. I don't mind this option. I feel like option two is better because I feel like it provides more assurance to the property owners. They would have more control. I'm not sure, we, I mean, we heard from the property owners that the TDR isn't particularly appealing, which probably just means that they wouldn't do anything, and they weren't planning to do anything anyway. So, it probably would have the same effect, except that it would provide no help for the owners in the parks to help control their circumstances. And what's happening now is the two parks, the owners in the two parks are experiencing things very difficult, differently. One of the parks, the owners are experiencing rents jacked up, leases that are unclear, problems with allowing people to sell their units, sell their homes. So, there's been quite a few issues in one of the two parks, but not in the other. And I think option two provides a better control for the owners. But I don't mind option one.
Councilmember Marshall, then councilmember Smith?
So, I think this is, the motion is to, it seems to give the most protection to the two parks on the river. And again, my original sense is that, we've spoken about the planning for the last twenty years and the vision thereof, and my vision, again, having grown up here, is one that doesn't mow down the homes of the least desirable, most low-income community. And I see this as favoring something that, and it'll have a disparate impact. I think they all ought to be treated the same.
Councilmember Smith, Danuski, Curtis?
I have a question for staff and for Arthur. Is, is there any way at all that is even possible to do any kind of blending of those two options, one and two? Or are they just so different in how they're structured that that's not possible?
I might respond. Option two is a purchase option. Again, I don't know whether you're talking about city purchase. We can't mandate that somebody purchase the mobile home park. There could be exploratory conversations and that kind of thing, but you have to have a willing seller and a willing buyer. So, it's less, there's less involvement on the city's part unless the city is wanting to directly purchase the mobile home park.
If I, oh, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, option two, I suppose, is always an option for any park unless you want to take a direct action to say the city wants to purchase the park.
I think if you want option two to occur, doing option one increases the likelihood it will occur.
Yeah. That's, no, that's good information. Thank you.
And without option one, it is much less likely to occur.
Yep, that makes sense. Okay. Councilmember Danuski, then Curtis?
I think Arthur just pretty much answered what I was going to say, that doing option one doesn't preclude somebody from buying the park and owners buying the park.
My question was answered as well.
Mayor?
I'll be supporting this very reluctantly. Because, one, I'm, as I said earlier, I'm kind of opposed to doing this on a piecemeal basis. But after the removal of option five, option one is the one that will give the most kind of certainty towards the folks living in those parks. So, I'll be supporting this reluctantly.
I guess I would love to see the park residents be able to buy the park, but I don't think I want to see the city buy the park. We're not a mobile home park manager or property manager, as we've shown time and time again. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I agree. I would not want to see the city do that as well. And then I just wanted to add, this was one of the two options also that was unanimously recommended by the planning commission. So, I think that is just worth remembering that.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yeah, and just a point of clarification, I wasn't thinking the city would buy it. I guess I was thinking something like an arch or homeowners association or something like that would be the purchaser. And it's a good point that you have to have a willing seller.
Right. Any further questions, comments? Clerk, please read back the motion.
The motion is for the two parks south of 522, option one, with owner compensation.
All right. Any further discussion? Two parks south of 522 with owner compensation. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Passed.
Six, one. All right. Parks north of 522. What direction do we want to take?
So, something I'm, just started thinking of is, you know, a lot of the planning commission recommendation for the north of 522 is option four. But it makes me a bit uncomfortable because you don't get the, you don't give that extra bit of time for the people who live there to plan well. You may end up with a lot more affordability in those locations, but, once again, they don't have much planning time. So, I'm almost wondering if there's a way to do like option four with a short-term preservation cap on it for like five years so that lets everybody know what's going to come. And, once again, even with option four, they could just keep the park as is forever if they didn't want to upzone. But at least option four with some, you know, like an extra five years or something can give people time to plan.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
I think that's option seven. I think, pretty much.
Correct. I agree.
Oh.
Councilmember Marshall?
I move to adopt mandatory, long-term preservation, option number one for the parks north of 522.
Oh.
Do we have a second? All second. Discussion? Councilmember Danuski?
Once again, I may have ended up there, but I'm not ready yet, so I'll have to say no right now.
Councilmember Curtis?
Point of order. Will we wait to vote on this until we are full council?
Yeah. I guess we'll just take a minor recess. We'll wait for the mayor to return.
I'll have a question in a.
Sure. Councilmember Danuski?
For staff, is option seven pretty much option, the short-term preservation plus option four on top of it?
Right. It's the same idea. It's just that your upzoning would occur at the end of a time period. We had recommended ten years, but you could adjust that to another time period.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have you, so in the options, so option seven, other than the ten-year timeframe, you're saying that's exactly the same as four?
The idea is that you basically require some period of preservation, and then you have a phased zoning. So, at the end of that time period, you do an upzone with affordability requirements. You could talk about the other components, first right to rent, relocation plan, homeowner assistance. You could add all the components of option four into seven. It's just that there's a delayed action.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. That actually makes sense about, just those add-ons, if you wanted. So, I'm, like Councilmember Danuski, I actually, so seven is very close to where, I mean, it kind of gets to my opening comments about short-term and intermediate predictability for the owners or the tenants that have their homes there. So, I definitely like the idea of preserving the right for long-term redevelopment, but having some short-term predictability.
What's the motion on the table again?
To treat everything north of 522 the same.
Option one. It was option one for.
Option one. Everything north of 522, option one. Councilmember Marshall?
And to speak to that motion, it's, again, to emphasize, I think, a equitable, inclusive version of Kenmore that doesn't have a disparate impact, disparate impact on the mobile home park with, I think, the majority of our Latino population and families. And a vision that I've had, I know many of us have had, we can have a walkable, I think, vibrant, new downtown with the work that's been going on across the street, as well as affording the housing for our mobile home park residents. We can definitely have both, and I think if we create a situation where those homes would go away, we're creating a gross inequity.
Any further comments? Okay, so the motion on the table is to treat all mobile home parks north of 522 the same with option one.
Ready for the vote?
Roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
No.
Councilmember Danuski?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
No.
Failed.
Councilmember Curtis?
I'd like to make a motion. My mic's gone. I'd like to make a motion that the mobile home park on 182nd be treated with option seven with the ten-year time period discussed or recommended.
I'll second that.
Moved and sectioned, and moved and seconded, mobile home park on 182nd Street be treated with option number seven with a ten-year.
Question or point of order? Could we just name the park? Give the name of the park?
Lakewood.
Thank you.
Okay, so then the motion on table is to treat Lakewood with option number seven with a ten-year timeframe. Is there a second?
There was a second.
There was a second. Councilmember Smith?
Discussion?
Can we have a brief restatement of option seven then?
So, option seven is a phased protective zoning. So, again, if you want to call it an overlay, it would be a zoning that went in place. The staff recommendation was ten years. At the end of that time period, there would be an upzoning of the property with affordability requirements. So, very similar to option one, except it's time-limited. Or, I'm sorry, option four. I misspoke.
Thank you for that.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, I appreciate, excuse me, well, I appreciate the preservation that is in option seven. I won't be voting for anything that includes upzoning, as upzoning, even if it's delayed by ten years, is still tacit endorsement of destruction of these communities and loss of those investments that the mobile homeowners have put into their homes. So, I'll be voting against this.
Councilmember Curtis?
So, one benefit I see of the upzoning, you could call it, but also you can put in affordability. Right now, there is no affordability requirement for the downtown commercial and the downtown residential. So, it will give us the opportunity to actually put in affordability requirements, if I understand that correctly.
I guess my concern would be that the affordability requirement is down to the thirty percent level, and the residents that would be displaced have first opportunity. Councilmember Shrubnik?
I think at this point, if I'm remembering a conversation earlier, I think we're just providing direction and that the nature of the upzoning, including the level of affordability, thirty, fifty, seventy, eighty, the percent of affordable units, all of those would still need to be discussed at a future point.
Correct.
Okay.
Which I would expect to, but I want my expectations noted. Councilmember Marshall?
But it nevertheless would create a sunset for Lakewood during which presumably we're not going to see those mobile home parks anymore or residents therein. And, again, I think it is a disparate impact upon one of the most wonderfully diverse populations we got in this town.
Danuski?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say out loud again that just because you get that upzone at the end of ten years doesn't mean they're going to take it.
Right.
This owner doesn't have any, you know, immediate plans to develop. They're making the money they need to make. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands that it doesn't mean at the end of ten years that park is gone. Okay.
No, it's just be laissez-faire, market takes over.
Councilmember Curtis?
That was my comment as well. It's up to the park owner to decide what to do. But they'll have more restrictions of affordability if something does happen.
Right. I might point out that this park owner is a developer and had said that the horizon was approximately ten years. So, this is not a park owner who said it was long-term preservation.
All right. Any further discussion? Clerk, would you read the motion, please?
Reread the motion?
Yes, please.
Just turn my microphone on. The one park, Lakewood on 182nd, option seven for ten years.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Mayor Baker?
No.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Passed.
Four, three.
Four, three.
All right. So, we still have two parks.
Three.
Three. Councilmember Curtis?
I'd like to make a motion that the three parks in the downtown commercial zone be treated with option four.
There are only two parks in the downtown commercial. The north side park is actually part downtown residential and part downtown commercial. So I think we probably want to speak, if you're speaking of the different parks by name, I think that would be. So it's Lake Terrace, it's the unnamed park on the south side, and Kenmore Village are the three remaining parks.
Those three.
What your comment was before that?
My comment was that not all of those parks are in the downtown commercial.
I was trying to simplify.
Right, the one on the south side is in the downtown commercial, the one on the north side is part downtown residential and part downtown commercial, and then the other one is actually a residential zone with the TOD overlay.
Does that change the motion? Does that change your motion?
No, it just removes the word "all" in the downtown commercial and names those three parks specifically.
We need a second, Mayor.
Pardon, we need a second on that, so the motion was to treat the remaining three with option number four. Is that correct?
Second that.
Moved and seconded. All right. Any further discussion? Councilmember Shrubnik.
I'm leaning this way, but I'm troubled by the lack of predictability. That option four, well, wouldn't provide, basically, that, I mean, it would not provide any predictability for the homeowners, so I'm not sure how to address that issue.
Councilmember Danuski?
I have the same concern, and I guess my way of addressing it would, I don't know, I think I would go for more option seven on these than four. I think everybody deserves. Time to plan.
I actually think that's reasonable. I mean, seven. Sorry.
Do we want to vote on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. If we're ready, no more comments? Okay.
So remaining.
Parks with option four.
Yep. Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
No.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
No.
Mayor Baker?
No.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Failed.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we, those same three parks that are served by option seven.
By option seven. All right.
Question?
Yeah.
Do we want to keep the 10-year staff recommendation or consider a five-year recommendation?
I would actually consider the five-year, I actually thought about that. Part of the reason I didn't bring it up is because I remember in the notes, staff said, I believe there was a comment that five years would be difficult or something, maybe, maybe staff can.
It's at least predictable.
It is, and it is better than no years, so I.
All right, so.
We need a second.
I thought we had a second.
No.
Sorry, I didn't.
Well, so you did seven with a five-year, is that yours?
So you did seven with a five, is that what?
I'm comfortable with option seven with a five-year.
I'll second that.
Seven with a five.
Could we restate with naming the names of the parks?
Can I have the names of the three parks?
The three parks are Lake Terrace, the unnamed park, and Kenmore Village.
Those three parks with option seven and five years notice. Councilmember Smith?
Could, I recall in one of the, it was probably in the cover memo, and it mentioned that 10 years would be difficult, it was, or less than 10 years would be difficult. Can you, is there anything you can add to that?
I think the only reason we thought that might be an issue was just because it's such, in zoning time, it's such a short time. But I don't think there's any reason you couldn't do it four or five years. It just, again, is a short period of time with not a lot of opportunity for other things to change. If we were thinking more like, well, the transit might be here, there were a number of things that might lead one to a different conclusion after a period of 10 years. The city would just be more developed, we'd have our transit.
That's a good point, thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Oh, Mr. Sullivan.
Huh? Oh, Mr. Sullivan, why do I do that? Mr. Sullivan, I am sure there's been many times in your 25 years that you would love to say what was on your mind. Could I please hear what your thoughts are on this?
Your last chance.
No, one of them.
On which element?
On what we've been discussing here, breaking this up, well, it's already broken up into two into the third.
The disparity issue.
Disparity issue, okay. Fine. Any further questions, any? Further comments? Councilmember Danuski?
I guess I'll be voting no on this one because I'd like to see the 10 years.
Councilmember Curtis and Councilmember Shrubnik. Shrubnik, you want?
Oh, just a quick clarification, you made me think of another issue, is how long does it take to actually develop what would be the upzone, what would be the end game if we did go with, you know, option seven? There's an upzone at the end, so we would have to develop that.
Right, but I would anticipate that we would develop that now as part of this proposal. So it would be a phased zoning, for the first 10 years, your zoning looks like this, and then after 10 years, your zoning looks like this. I don't think we would try to wait the time period and then figure out what the zoning was.
Councilmember Curtis?
I think a benefit of this would be that everything north of 522 would be option seven, so I do have some simplicity. I think switching back to 10 would actually be better than five. I hadn't considered some of those options that, you know, other things will change in the city in the next 10 years that wouldn't necessarily in five years.
Did you want to make amendment to that?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment to the motion to change it from five years to 10.
Moved and seconded amendment to change it, the term from five years to 10 years.
Councilmember Smith, you with the second?
Yes.
There's no discussion on this. Clerk, take the roll.
This is on the amendment only.
On the amendment only, and the amendment is from five years to 10 years.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passed.
All right, so the motion now becomes, treat.
The remaining.
Remaining units with option number seven with 10 years implementation. Councilmember Curtis?
Just one last comment, same as before, that it does then in 10 years allow us to add affordability. It doesn't exist in those zones now, affordability requirements.
Can we add affordability requirement now if we wanted to?
The upzone would add the affordability at the end of the phase.
End of the upzone, yeah. Okay, I'm with you.
I think you were saying drafted now, so it knows what it will be.
Right.
Councilmember Marshall?
So rather than mandatory long-term preservation, it is short-term preservation as couched by 10 years. And sure, there's no mandatory sale, but then again, there's absolutely no mandatory preservation, and the market and circumstances at that time take over, that invisible hand that guides, guides the market and guides our lives and does what it does.
Any further comments? Questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll. The motion on the table is three units north of 522 treated with option seven for 10 years.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Mayor Baker?
No.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Passed, four-three.
All right. You should have direction now.
We have direction, thank you.
So we have your direction, so now we need to start working on crafting some of the regulations, and that will involve coming back to council because we may need to get some policy direction as we craft the amendments, if that makes sense. So probably won't be back for several weeks now because it's going to take time to put this together.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is authorize city manager execute amendment number two to contract 18-C1832 with Johnson Group. Ms. Owsley?
Ma'am, council, the city manager and I are available to answer any questions about this contract amendment. This is a consultant contract that was entered into in late January, early February to assist in staffing the mayor as he serves on the Sound Transit Board of Directors, which includes serving on two board committees as well as the full board. This amendment would continue that arrangement through the end of this year.
Okay, and either yourself or the mayor could expand on how the group helps and assists in advocacy? How does it help in preparation for meetings, just to expand a little bit as to what they do and how they help?
Let me.
Please.
So serving on the Sound Transit Board, everybody seems to have staff, all of the board members seem to have staff. I know that the Johnson Group has helped me, Scott McCall in particular, who used to work as legislative, legislative person over in Shoreline. But he helps me to ensure that we're doing what's best for Kenmore. He has been instrumental in trying to get the focus where it needs to be to ensure that ST3 products are delivered to Kenmore. He also helps me understand some of the legislative issues that are happening in Sound Transit and how we can best move forward. I think one of the things he's been quite helpful with is garage location and that. The other thing that he's been helpful with is trying to ensure that we had restroom facilities in the newer stations, because in the past, there's been no restroom facilities. And with the Silver tsunami, the aging population, pregnant women and children, I think it's important that there are restroom facilities in the station. So that's another big thing that he's working on with me. So, and also in somewhat with Sound Transit issues that will come up in Olympia. Because I know I've also been, I've been approached many times by a number of different legislators on my. Councilmember Danuski and the city manager.
So I guess what just confused me now is you said most Sound Transit director or board members have staff. Who pays for their staff, Sound Transit or the cities? So pretty much all the board members have some kind of help paid for by the city that they come from?
Right, like John Marchioni, the mayor of Redmond has his staff. But Mayor Earling, out in Edmonds, has staff.
And it's consistently paid for by the city, not Sound Transit?
Exactly, by the cities. So Edmonds is paying for their staff, Redmond's paying for their staff. Bigger cities, Lakewood, University Place, the mayor of University Place is staffed.
We got others at the biggest table.
University Place is also.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor, I would imagine too that the jurisdiction of Sound Transit and therefore the board is pretty large. It's urban areas of three counties. And so that's a lot of different issues to keep track of.
There are a lot of different issues to keep track of. But my primary issue is Kenmore. Yes.
Somehow it seems wrong, but it's buying us a seat at the table. And if that's what everybody does, Sound Transit doesn't have an entity to pay for everybody to support people. So if this is how it's financed, then so be it. I'm in favor of it.
Councilmember Marshall?
And the, it mentioned, I think, staff interactions, and is that like setting up meetings with the various staff? Not social occasions?
No, 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 no.
Right, okay.
So one of the issues that we have right now is garage location, that the city manager council is taking a position on it. And so he's helping me set up meetings with some of the key staff with Sound Transit to ensure that garage gets placed where we want it placed.
Thank you.
Mayor?
I wouldn't argue, I wouldn't say this is buying a seat at the table, the mayor already had a seat at the table. This is making sure that the mayor has the foundation behind him and the support behind him to be successful at the table. Two different things, so.
Yeah, city manager?
Yes, so Sound Transit is a multi-billion dollar agency, and I've seen the packets that the board members have to sort through. It's literally a mountain of paperwork. Meanwhile, we have you as a volunteer, you're not paid anything extra to be on Sound Transit. You have to be, you're the mayor of a city, you have a day job, and so I think you do need this help. You need this help from Scott McCall to help you sort through all this, go through the materials, summarize it for you, and pretty much, for the most part, save you time. And I do think that it's a great benefit for you to be on this board. It's a huge win for the city that you have been appointed to this board. And just because you're going to be there to make sure that our projects get built. And so like Councilmember or Deputy Mayor Herbig said, you need to be successful as a board member there. And I think this is worth it to help you be successful.
I think, because there's such a larger organization, there's so many political nuances, right? Scott has been involved in that for a number of years, he's very, very good at it. He knows a lot of the little ins and outs and how I should be asking questions, you know, and which I don't necessarily always know how to do. I go in like a bull in a china shop sometimes, and so he's been quite helpful on a number of occasions in suggesting how I should go about things and how I should be asking for things and who I should be asking and stuff, so.
Yeah, he's really good on political strategy.
Really is, and he's quite good on transportation issues, so. Councilmember Smith?
I would just like to say, I would much rather you be prepared than ill-prepared. This, it is big stuff, and it's like, it's, when I first saw it, I thought it was 3,000 a month, I'm thinking, wow. But just the value of you there alone is so wonderful, and I appreciate the time you're putting into that. So I want you to be successful.
Thank you. You guys know I enjoy committees and I enjoy stuff, but sometimes it does get a little overwhelming. And this is the big time, I mean, seriously, this is, this is not a little committee, this is important stuff.
I'd like to make a motion to. I'd like to make a motion to approve amendment number two to contract number 18-C1832 with the Johnson Group.
I'll second.
Or recuse myself.
Thank you.
What did your consultant say?
So, any further questions? Comments? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Passed.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate the confidence you put in me every week, and it means a lot. I want to present the best face for Kenmore. I want to be able to do what's best for our community and make our community grow, so thank you.
And I would just say, you contribute to the whole Puget Sound, and I know you'll do that. It won't be just representing Kenmore. You will do what's best for the whole project.
Thank you. All right. Staff report. Oh, yeah, we, this is kind of backwards, staff report. That's okay.
Yeah, just one thing. So, we are definitely in the midst of budget season, preparing our biennium budget for 2019 and 2020. And Joanne Gregory has been working tirelessly. She's been coming in nights and weekends, and I really appreciate her work and her expertise. By state law, we're required to provide at least a summary level budget to you by, is it October 1st? Okay, so this, so September 24th, this coming Monday, we'll have a, just a summary level budget for you to meet the statutory requirements. And then on October 8th, we'll actually hand out the budget book at that meeting or portions of it, including the city manager budget message. And so, we'll actually hand out those things that night. And then we'll go over a few highlights that night, but then we'll give you a good week to start reading the budget, and then we'll get into the department presentations in the meetings after that in the month of October. I got to say though, this has been an extra tough budget to balance. We do have a proposed budget for you that is balanced for 19 and 20. But it has highlighted the structural financial problems that bedroom communities like Kenmore have to bear. And it has highlighted how I think money is unfairly distributed in the state of Washington. I just looked at 2017 sales tax figures. Woodenville, population 11,000, collected $6.2 million in sales tax in 2017. We collected 2.2, and we're double their size in population. Our citizens are going to Woodenville and Lynwood and Bellevue or wherever, Seattle, and paying sales tax, and it ain't coming back to Kenmore. Pre-I-695, pre-year 2000, there used to be sales tax equalization where the state recognized that inequity and attempted to make cities whole. That's been gone for 20 years now, and cities have been struggling. But without some fundamental change in the structure of how bedroom communities are financed, we're going, our lines are going to be crossing soon. Or the name of the game is just go to the voters all the time. You know, other districts do it, the school district, the name of their game is just constantly going to the voters. The fire district has to go to the voters periodically for their fire benefit charge. Maybe that's just something we become accepting of, that we just, from now on, we just have to go to the voters all the time for everything. So, anyway, that's my commentary for tonight. Have a great rest of your week.
Well, that's your poll, though.
All right. Councilmember comments, reports, initiatives? Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Shrevnik?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Curtis?
Report on ETP from last Friday. There were two rousing discussions. One was on e-bike policy, and it was fascinating. And one place, City Seville, in four years, they developed the policy, the funding, the engineering, marking the roads and everything to develop these massive bike programs, bike systems. In Seville. I assume it's Seville, Spain. I didn't know any Seville, U.S., but, but, so it was like an introductory discussion. We had more questions than we had time to answer. So, lots coming. There's lots of issues with, you know, with the e-bikes. It lets older people ride who don't really want to do those hills or can't do those hills anymore. So, lots of benefits. And enough restrictions, and there's state laws to kind of outline some of the basics, and then cities still need to implement their part. The next big topic was called Roadmap to Washington's Future. And basically, it's an update on the Growth Management Act. And I think the important thing there is there are three workshops coming up for electeds particularly. And for me to just read them off, I don't know if it makes any sense. Maybe I should just give them to the clerk and have her get this information out. But basically, September 15th at Gould Hall, September 20th, Taquilla, September 27th, Issaquah.
This is a Rockwell House study, yeah, on some of the Growth Management Act stuff.
So, how about if I do that? I'll just give that to. Oh, okay. Okay. That's all for me.
Councilmember Marshall?
There's an issue that the council needs to deal with, and I bring before you with utmost gravity concerning the Kenmore hangar, and that is, there is a Bothell High School Cougars football team poster posted in the hangar. Now, it has been pointed out to me that there are citizens of Kenmore who are attending Bothell High School, I know that. But I, I accept the, I expect and accept the council's full support in going through appropriate staff, Shelby and others at the hangar, to move forward with all efforts to get up an Inglemore High School Vikings football poster in that hangar.
I think we should also get an Inglemore Vikings football poster in Bothell. Councilmember Smith?
I did have nothing to add until I heard that comment, and then I realized that because we do have Kenmore residents that do attend Bothell with the new boundary adjustments and everything, so maybe we could have an informal policy that, oh, you know, Inglemore posters get to be hung higher than the Cougar poster.
There you go.
I'm sorry, I did have one other thing to say, and I just want to say on this mobile home park thing, I actually think tonight was a really big night because there's been a lot of work, there's still a lot of work still to come. But tonight was, it was, it's a tough thing to work through. There's a lot going on, even in that clear matrix, it was confusing. And so, I just appreciate the fact that everybody's hanging in there and being able to work towards, you know, hopefully viable solutions, and because I, I knew tonight would be a daunting discussion, and it actually went better than I was thinking, and so, I was really pleased on that, so.
I told my wife I'd be home late.
Yeah, I did too.
So, in that discussion of ETP, we had somebody from Marstot and somebody from the Bicycle Association talking about the benefits of biking and whatever. So, I got one of them after the meeting, the lady from Marstot, and she told me that her husband got caught in that sting where we did 87 tickets in four hours, and he didn't deserve the ticket because he's able to balance himself on the bike while coming to a complete stop, so, anyway. Nothing else, we're done.